All right, I'm gonna call the meeting to order. We are at 6:03 on Wednesday, October 22. This is the Villa Park Growth Commission. We'll do a quick roll call here. So Commissioner Schreiner.
Here.
Commissioner White.
Here.
Commissioner Wong is absent, and Commissioner Stash.
Here.
Great, and I am Matt Weiss. I'm the chair. Thank you all for taking the time to come to this today. I really appreciate it. We've got quite a bit to cover on the agenda, and we're gonna be talking about some really cool things that I think we're, we're gonna be thinking about and get our informed some of the longer-term vision of this commission, as well as how we can interact with other commissions within the village and work with the village under some new business, so we'll get to that in a moment. But first, I'd like to do a public comment on agenda items. Seeing none, we will move to item three on the agenda, which is public comment on non-agenda items. Again, seeing none, we're gonna move to item four, which is the amendments to the agenda. Does anyone have any amendments to the agenda that they'd like to propose? Hearing none, we are going to move to item five, which is the consent agenda. Any changes to the consent agenda? Okay, moving to item six. Okay, let's get to the meat and potatoes here. So item six is business, new business discussion on commission items. I've got a few things that I'd like to talk through real quick. Specifically, I've been thinking through, and I know that I've talked with a fair number of you about kind of two to three primary areas that I'm hoping that we can focus on through the commission. One of which we brought up at some past meetings, which is a welcome packet for new residents and businesses within the community. The second of which is thinking about what hiring a lobbyist might look like for Villa Park. And obviously, we're not gonna make any recommendations in this commission today. It's something that I think, though, I would like to at least start the discussion in this meeting about, and then we can obviously have it on subsequent agendas in the months to come, and to see whether or not this is a good fit for our municipality. But I think backing up a second and thinking about the welcome packet, I was given a little bit of feedback from, from a few of you on things that we can talk through with the, with the welcome packet. And I know that I passed this along as well when I, I sent the email out last week. But a few things, and then again, this is just a draft, and I think it's something that we're gonna, we're gonna have to have some discussion around. But ultimately, we're thinking of a way to engage new residents and businesses, as well as spur some kind of outreach to them, and business, I would guess, to local employers and businesses. So we could include coupons with this. We could have a way of getting a welcome packet out to residents and new businesses who register with Villa, with Villa Park, including some bigger box entities, such as Target and Jewel, Walmart. Also thinking about how we would do this, and kind of the mechanics behind that operation, because it is a little tricky. Obviously, this is something that is gonna be relatively dynamic, so we're gonna have to ensure that the list is continuously updated, and we're always kind of working through those things. So one of the things that we had been talking through was utilizing kind of the, the village water tracking service, or metering service, as a way to kind of ensure that that database is consistently up to date. Does anybody have any feedback on that so far, with what I said?
I think it's a great idea. Oh, sorry.
You're good.
Thank you. I think it's a great idea. One of the things that helped us at the perk is partnership with the Ovaltine Core Apartments, and they see new residents in often, and we've collaborated with them on ways to kind of cross-pollinate. And we've offered coupons and other things like that for new residents, for coffees and such. So it was well received, and I can see that scaling in this fashion and being successful.
Cool. Commissioner White?
Are we looking at doing two different packages, one for actual residents and one for businesses? Because I think that would be, I would think that would be needed, actually, because there'll be different stuff needed in a, in a business than there would be in the residents.
Yeah. That's a really good point. And I don't think it, we've, we've gotten to that level of detail yet, so I'm glad that we're talking about it, because you're right, we're gonna need different things in different packets. Because obviously, these would be pre-assembled and kind of ready to mail out, would be the hope. And so, we would need, to your point, like business ones, and then focus on, you know, residential ones, which would have kind of the coupons that we're talking through. I think specific for the business one, did anyone have any ideas about what we should include? I'm thinking personally about like, how to do business with the village, maybe, and other businesses that are within the village that might make sense. Al, you had a comment?
Yeah, exactly what you said. I agree with.
Okay.
And there was one other item that I think we may be talking about later, I'm not sure. Our liaison with the staff, Fire Chief Steve Stapleton is here tonight, and I believe Steve has put together a brochure, or about to, about new fire code conditions here in the village of Villa Park. And I thought that was exceptionally good, because I did speak to one business here in town, when I visited him for other reasons, and we were talking about a facility that he has that's unused and rentable. And he was concerned that that facility would require sprinkler systems in order to occupy that, that location.
Yeah.
And I don't know if Chief Stapleton would like to address that, but he gave me instant information that said, that's just not true.
Oh, wow. Chief Stapleton, I don't know if you have a comment, but you're, you're welcome to speak.
Sure. No, no problem. However, at one of the meetings, there were some questions, because some of you are business owners, and I said that about fire protection requirements, and I said, well, that, that's not necessarily true. Again, you have the fire code, and then you have our village amendments, and they, they have changed throughout the years. So in 2024, January 2024, we adopted the 2021 International Code Council, which is the international fire code, building code, electrical code, and Illinois planning code, the energy conservation code. So Al brought up to me his discussion with one of the business owners, and I told him, like, you know, that's not true. And Al actually came up with the idea of, hey, what if we put something like a brochure together? So I threw some things together about, hey, you know, here's some fire protection requirements that have changed for building owners. Just in case you're thinking of renting out your business, or, or changing the use group, doesn't necessarily mean anymore that you have to install a sprinkler system. That was an old code that we had. So I created this. I sent it to Al to share with you guys, just a draft idea. You know, I can't take the credit for it. Al was the mastermind behind it, just trying to help him out.
That's fantastic feedback.
To give a, what that means to this individual, he was contemplating that he would have to spend up to $100,000 to put in a sprinkler system, at seven to $10 per square foot.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? Now potentially, he doesn't have to. And that property can become a revenue-producing thing for him and the village. So that's how critical I think stuff like that is, especially coming from the Economic Development Department and others, to get, and that's, I mean, I know we're getting granular here, but that's the kind of thing that I think really will impact some businesses in town.
Mm-hmm.
Especially new ones.
Yeah.
I think, I love the new packages for like, new residents, but I think we should have two more packages for us to be able to look at and really focus on. One, going to owners of current building, like current building owners. A packet of something to let them know, these are some codes. Did you know this is available? Do you know this is a person to contact? Do you know we have a list of trying to grow things? This is some stuff that's coming up. So if they're looking to get somebody new in, they have resources that they need, and like a little pamphlet or something to be able to talk to people who are looking at their space for renting.
Yep.
Information that they would know. Secondly, I think that they'll be good if we could come up for some type of packet, to reach out to, maybe even be really, like, throw like a coffee together or something for realtors, especially those who are commercial realtors or realtors that are gonna be going out. They could really influence, you know, you have people coming in from all over, and they could basically say, you wanna stay from this, stay away from this town, or go to this town.
Yep.
So I think they could be a good resource to try and get out to, and if we could get some packet, if we could get a packet or something to let them know.
Yeah, so I agree with that 100%. I'm glad you said it, because I was thinking it. I think realtors would be a really excellent resource to, I think, encourage with some of this, like Villa Park, these, these kinds of packets. And we may be able to create, maybe, maybe instead of a new, like a new resident packet, maybe it's just a Villa Park resident packet, right? Because I'm sure that there are a lot of people who are living here currently, who might not be aware of, you know, things like newer businesses, or some of the things that are out there. And if we create something that's more universal, it can be accessible to everybody. But I do think that these kinds of packets would be excellent in the hands of realtors, because they are showing off houses, they know who's new, they know who's not, and they can use, you know, there are, everybody's looking for some assistance, some resources to help them, you know, sell a house or, or a property, and that would be a good thing.
Sure. Al?
As far as new residents, for 50 years, there was a, a welcome wagon organization that came to my house when I was a kid, every time we moved from one location to another. And it was a lady with a bag of coupons and information, and wanted to chat about how great the village was. And I remember that specifically growing up, and thought, what a great idea. Now we know a little bit more about this town. So I agree with you 1,000%, Brandon, that, you know, we should give something to everybody, but keep focus on also new residents that would not have gotten it until we showed up, or someone showed up with that, that new information.
No, I really, I really like this conversation a lot, because I think we're, we're starting to get the framework nailed down of what this would look like, and who the audience is that we would, I think primarily focus on, but also kind of a secondary effort for just residents in general, and kind of how we want information to be distributed to them. I just wanted to, so I, I did receive this sheet that I, I shared with everyone prior to this, from another, there were recommendations from another commission as to what would be included in the packet. But just a few things that I, I'd like to just list off here real quick. You know, some, it was, it contains some information on the village departments, explanation of the website, things like the village app, commission structures, instructions on how to sign up for like Smart 911, things like that. And then also, there was an idea in here to include info about this building, we're in the rec center today, and maybe, and the parks department, and maybe also have something like three months of access to the, the rec center, to encourage people to come out and enjoy the facility. That is great. I wish people would enjoy it. Hope they do. But I feel, I feel like, you know, if we can, if we can start to create a running list of things that we want in this packet, you know, we could start to get this together. Because I, I do think that this is something that's achievable relatively soon.
Yeah.
So can I make a motion?
Yeah, sure.
Motion that one of us, to be volunteered, create that list and have it available for our next meeting.
Yeah, that's a good motion. Do we have any volunteers to help compile that, to compile the list, not help compile it?
I could help them that way.
Commissioner White?
So we need to second my motion first.
Yes, we do.
I'll second the motion.
Thank you. Thank you. So we've got Al make the motion, Commissioner Schreiner second it. I think Commissioner White is gonna compile the list. All in favor of this?
Aye.
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 Perfect. The ayes have it. All right.
Thank you, Melissa.
Yes. Thank you very much. That is fantastic. I'm gonna jot that down, so we can include that. And so, Commissioner White, I'll include this as a follow-up on our next, in our November meeting agenda, then. Is a, Commissioner White, is a month enough time to get a comprehensive list together?
Initially, yes. Am I focusing on all lists, or am I focusing on just the residents?
I would think everything, right?
Okay.
So, and I can send you, again, kind of what we've talked about here, and go through it. And then we've also got, obviously, the, what's been sent from other commissions, too. So that should be a really good starting place.
Perfect.
Commissioner Schreiner?
Just wanna say I'd be happy to connect with you at any point, to bounce ideas off and throw ideas on the list, too.
Thank you very much.
We can talk, we can, either on the phone, or at the shop, or something.
Yeah, totally. Yeah. You can phrase the question, that's fine.
Melissa, wanted to address this issue with you. Sorry?
Michelle.
Michelle, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
I'll read my notes closer next time. Michelle, our interim economic development director. Did I get that right?
Community economic.
Okay.
Okay.
Do you have a program in the department yet that does anything like what we're talking about, or would you help us create that?
No, we don't currently have something like this. I know there's examples from other municipalities that you may be able to steal from. So I would definitely look at some other municipalities. As far as, one of my ideas for you tonight was looking at that for businesses as well. So thanks for bringing that up, because I think that is a good idea. I'm sorry to interject my comments, but you think it is potentially different information that you may wanna include for each. I think as far as the businesses, something that I was gonna mention is like, how do you apply for a permit? What are your utility connection information? Things like that to help them get into that business space and get going. You know, we're happy to provide the information on how to apply for a permit, what they may need for their alarm information, if they wanna have a Knox box, you know, things from different village departments. We'd be happy to help formulate.
That's great.
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Michelle.
Commissioner White, if it's not too presumptuous, I would just strongly recommend that you connect with Michelle after the, after the meeting. It sounds like she's got a lot of things and experience, kind of navigating this and putting these things together. So thank you again for that. Really appreciate it. I think while, while we're on it, do you mind talking a lit, Michelle, again, do you mind talking a little bit about your role, just because this is our first time meeting you in this capacity? So it'd be good to just hear kind of what your role is with the village, and how you see interacting with our commission.
And are we picking up the audio on this, from them?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Unless, if it's possible, you can put some of that in the corner.
Sorry, I didn't mean to have you do the big walk around here, but it's, thank you.
This is a recreation center.
I was gonna say, yeah. Put a treadmill down if you wanted.
Not that I, I guess I'll just sit over here for right now.
You're fine. That's perfect. Thank you.
So I'm currently the interim director of community and economic development. So things that our department oversees is all permitting for, within the village, both residential, commercial. Anytime you need to do anything, please give us a call. We're happy to talk through that. One of the things that we're gonna be coming out in our new newsletter is we're gonna be starting a construction coffee talk. So if you do have ideas, either as a business or as residents, we're gonna have all of our village people that you may need to talk to, engineers, our zoning review, our, you know, business review, and then plan review, so you can talk to us about anything, and we can help guide you in what you may need to do as far as those permits. We oversee all certificates of occupancy, so any new business coming into town, we look at the use, help guide, you know, if you're trying to store things outside, if you need new signage, all those things come through our office as well. Any new development coming into town, pass through all of our commissions. So I'm the staff liaison to the zoning board of appeals. So although I usually don't go to this commission, I do oversee that. So anybody requesting variations, new planned developments, anything that would require a village commission review, we review as well, and try and make those developments as best as they can for all of our residents and business owners. Yeah. And then as far as the economic development side, we do that, too. So you might have heard, we just hired a consultant to help with economic development work. They've already started trying to make connection with brokers, who may be representing both tenants looking for space, and landowners who have available space. We also have a subscription to CoStar, which is basically the commercial Realtor, the commercial MLS, so any space that is available for commercial use, we can see, you know, what are all the information contacts that we can help try and do some of those connections as well. But that's really what our economic development consultant is gonna be doing, is trying to make those connections, getting those people to talk to each other, but then the village a little bit steps away to let the land owners to let the landowner and the potential tenant make that deal themselves. Whether that's changing, changing hands of property to make a new building or new development happen, or just getting a tenant into a currently vacant space.
That's fantastic. Uh, thank you for that. How often, I'm curious, is the construction coffee talking to me?
So for now, we're just starting it out as once a month.
That's great.
We'll see how it goes. Um, so we're thinking a couple hours on a Friday morning once a month. And then if it's super popular, then we may increase the frequency. But, um, we were thinking over the winters when a lot of people start planning their spring and summer projects. So it'd be a great time to get people in. Building permits are good for a year. So even if you get your permit over the winter, you still have all year to complete it. Um, so trying to, we have more time in the winter because people aren't doing as many outside projects or additions. So if we can help get people's permit review done faster, that's our goal.
That's awesome. Great. Absolutely, yeah.
Uh, is there any documentation of those meetings? In other words?
It'll be in the upcoming newsletter, um, that comes out, I believe, before Thanksgiving. So you'll see it in there. And then we're also going to do a social media blitz on it and then also have it on our website. But the newsletter is kind of the first time that we're going to be coming out. So you guys know about it before the rest of the, rest of Villa Park does.
Fantastic.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Oh, that was really good. Um, does anyone else have any questions? Okay. Thank you. Appreciate it. Thanks for stepping up to the mic. Fantastic. I, we're making really good progress here. Um, this is great. So, uh, one of the other new business items that I did want to talk through, and again, I mentioned this at the kind of opening, was just the idea of, uh, hiring a lobbyist. And again, this is very, you know, preliminary. Nothing is set in stone. We're not making recommendations here. I just wanted to have the discussion about hiring a, a state lobbyist for the village. And my, my rationale behind this thinking and this idea is frankly, looking at the village budget and some of the woes that we're having. Obviously, I think we've got, like, the village's comprehensive plan for growth is significant, robust. I think there's a lot of great things in there. Uh, those things are going to require funding. And I think it's, it's very difficult to obtain funding, especially if we're thinking about state means, if we don't have someone in Springfield who's consistently advocating for the village. So that was, it was something that I, I've been kind of mulling around and thinking through. I know I've talked with a couple of you about this idea. It's, you know, I, again, I'd like to just get some ideas on this. It's, it's something that I, I'd like to build out a little bit more of a comprehensive narrative for the November meeting and maybe have another discussion at that point about this before we start to either make recommendations or not. But I, I did want to at least bring it up as a, as something that I felt the village was needing and also lacking. Part of this too is that, so surrounding municipalities, many of them do have lobbyists that they hire for either major projects or things that are coming up. And I, it's not to say that we want to, you know, go and spend a bunch of money on a lobbyist and waste that and just have them go off willy-nilly of supporting whatever. I think we have to have a very targeted idea of what we're going to be doing here and how we're going to be targeting different funds, but I do think that it's a value add.
Um, you have some experience working with lobbyists and, um, what their capacity is and what they can bring to the table. I'm not familiar with it. So I was wondering if you could just give me like an explain like I'm five, how does a lobbyist bring value into the village?
Yeah, so a, as we think about, you know, looking at, so, and it's no secret, I think, that Illinois is dealing with state budget woes as well, right? So I think though, you know, there, there is consistently money for certain infrastructure projects. And so I think as we think about the village's direction and what we're trying to highlight in specific areas that we're going after, what, what my experience with lobbyists have done, and, and granted, this is more like the policy advocacy side of the fence, right? So it's not supporting capital campaigns. But I do think that what I've seen is, I've seen them be effective in communicating that message on behalf of the constituency or the client. And they're able to do it in a way that I think, first off, none of us have time or the ability to do, and that existing elected officials also don't have the time or the ability to do, right? Taking that train down to Springfield is tough. While we have elected officials who oversee this kind of area within Villa Park, I do think that, you know, trying to create a carve-out even within the state budget poses challenges. And the reality here is you have to have backing for that. And so I do think that the, the dollars that we would invest in this, yes, we would eventually reap back in the form of state funding that we could potentially receive. There's another side of this coin, which is just grant writing on our own, right? And so it doesn't make sense to support projects via some type of part-time grant writer, a contracted grant writer, or even working with village staff to do this. You know, and even then you're still looking at a government versus philanthropic, right? Even versus private donations type of thing. So I, I, I do think there's a, a lot there to unpack, which is why I just wanted to start the conversation.
Yeah.
Does that, is that helpful?
It's helpful, yes. Thank you.
And I think if you could clarify also the distinction between lobbyist and a person who's a grant writer.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
I know that in certain departments, especially like the fire department, there is a, a lot of activity that was very successful for grants in the past to o, o, over a million dollars for equipment and, and, uh, things that the, the departments need. Also, the Parks and Recreation Department has done several OSLAT, is that the right pronunciation? Grants for, right here in this facility, the outdoor, uh, facilities was a part of an OSLAT grant. There are experts in our village on writing grants and getting those successfully treated. Is that categorically different from a lobbyist?
Yes. So I, when I, when I think about this, right? One of the things that comes to mind is dollars that are being, I think, made available for projects and specific communities and are already appropriated versus those that are not and that we have to advocate for or lobby for.
Okay.
And so I think that's the, that's the primary distinction that I see between the two functions. At least, again, this is been from my experience, right? So I think the grant write, these two things can be and should be very symbiotic, right? I think we should, both of these activities should be going after the same goal, which is furthering whatever mission or thing we want to do and grow within Villa Park. Whatever project is there that we need to fund. I do think though that, you know, and look, we may be able to get by just by writing grants, depending on what's available and what's out there. I will say though, with the reduction of federal funding coming into the state, with new scrutiny's being placed on federal, existing federal resources that the state is having to spend, we're going to have to be more reliant on local and state funding than we have been in federal funding. And so I do think that it's going to be really critical for us to have that presence down in Springfield at some point for us to advocate for Villa Park. It's easy to get lost in the metropolitan region shuffle. And, and, and I feel like that's, that's what's driving me towards this idea. But again, I, I'm not, I'm not like married to this by any means, and I love the questions. I think it's something that we really need to poke and prod and talk about at length so that we can advocate for the right call for the village.
Sounds good.
Yeah.
I mean, it sounds like, it sounds great, right? Like get somebody out there to go hunt for money. And, uh, we have a lot of projects. We have a lot of, uh, potential here in the village. I think there's so much growth opportunity that, um, I think there's a lot of great selling points for Villa Park in Springfield. So I, I think it would yield some positive benefits for the village. Just guessing.
I, I'm going to, you know, again, this was just meant to be kind of an introductory idea. So what my plan is here is I'm just going to put together a kind of more robust thing and document that I can share, uh, with the commission and we can, you know, have a discussion about that. And again, continue to prod and poke and prod and make sure that this even makes sense for us. It may not. We'll go with Commissioner White, then Commissioner Shrinor.
When you do, can you put something down in basically lameness terms so that we're talking about it? Basically to say, because if I'm understanding this correctly, it's pretty much like, if the state of Illinois already has a hundred dollar budget to be able to put in sidewalks, we're lobbying because we need sidewalks in here that they give us some of the money instead of having it all go to Chicago. Is pretty much what you're trying to say, like in lameness terms, that's kind of pretty much what it is. Money that's already funded for something that we get a portion of it to be able to do that infrastructure or something here.
Yes, or money that isn't even appropriated yet that we could then have line items carved out.
Yes, okay.
So I, yes, I, yes.
Pretty much something like that. So this way, people who don't know anything at all about it would
No, totally get it. I got it. Yes.
Yeah, so I was, I was thinking it might be good to come up with a, a list of projects or items, things that lobbyists could, like the types of projects that they would be advocating for. Um, understanding those might help us to justify getting one.
Yep.
So we have a target and then go for their purpose.
Yep. This is, this is all great feedback. I will.
In your experience, do you find that a lobbyist would be aware of opportunities that are not publicized?
Yes, but it depends on the entity that we would look to work with.
Okay.
I would say more than anything. I think we have to be, again, very targeted and very sure about what we are trying to fund and fundraise for. And again, it, it, it may not be worth it depending on whether or not there is existing grant funds that are available for it. Um, I, you know, I know there are local and sometimes even larger foundations that give to, you know, for infrastructure. Oftentimes, there's even people's wills and trusts that would fund certain projects. So I think, again, we've got to explore all that stuff. I do agree that a list is probably a good place to at least start to start and think about where this would make sense to insert this effort, if it makes sense at all. And, and again, I'm not married to this. I, I will put something together that explains it a little bit better for this commission and then we can again, have another discussion in November about it. Great. Uh, thank you for humoring me on that. I appreciate it. Okay. Uh, do we have any, I, so we're in business. I'd, I'd like to move to, well, so I've already made my chair comments. So I'd like to move to commissioner comments. So, uh, point eight in the agenda. Does any of the commissioners have any comments that they'd like to share that hasn't been discussed?
Nope, not for me.
Oh, I would like to say something.
Sure.
I want to call, um, give a shout out to Al for, um, being proactive in that conversation with the landlord. I think that that is a very real, um, impact. I think it's a cautionary tale about an example of, um, a space in Villa Park that was going unutilized for no good reason.
Correct.
And, um, for inspiring and motivating, um, some opportunity for Villa Park growth, which is what we're all here for. Um, and then additionally, um, you know, you put together, uh, Villa Park Magazine, which, um, I don't know if it's been mentioned here, but I think it's, uh, really great. So I just wanted to, um, appreciate you for a moment for your proactivity and your hard work for the village.
Thank you. Appreciate that. And, and earlier, uh, Chief Stapleton gave me a lot of credit for writing a, a, uh, document that he drafted. I had nothing to do with writing.
Nice.
Only instigated it.
There we go. Awesome.
And, uh, and when I mentioned before that there was people in this, in this village that are very good grant writers, we have one present here, uh, who has done a lot. There he goes, looking around. It's, again, our current fire chief, Steve Stapleton, as a deputy fire chief, he was responsible for over $1 million of grants
That's great.
being successful in the village of Villa Park. And that's just one individual. Think of people in Parks and Rec that have done all of these things, this building and others, parks in this village, that are exceptionally well-done. And streets and everything else.
Mm-hmm. Well, that's fantastic.
So thank you anyway. Appreciate it.
No, I, I too thought that your comment about that business was timely. We, we had been, actually right before the meeting started, um, there was a brief discussion just about a similar situation with a business and kind of the misconceptions of things and kind of how that got handled. So it was, it was very timely.
Yeah, yeah.
Great.
Hopefully it'll be productive.
Yes. Uh, okay. Uh, moving on to point nine, staff liaison comments. Chief Stapleton, do you have anything to share? Nothing? Okay, great. Um, and then village board liaison comments. So village board liaison, uh, trustee Sabri is not here tonight, so we're going to skip 10. So I will motion to adjourn the meeting then. We are at 6:37.
Second?
Second from Commissioner Shrinor. On favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, the ayes have it. We are adjourned. Thank you all.
Great meeting, you guys.
Thank you for suncalm being here.